Prior to six thirty, we'll call the meeting to order. This is a regular meeting of the Cedarburg School Board. Point of state number sixteen, twenty-two, accident. This is a public opinion prior to, prior notice has been placed in the district and additional copies will forward it to the city and town of Cedarburg as well as the Musquegon Park and Geraldson. How's that? Is that better? Sorry about that. All right, please join me in the public meetings.
Over there, over there.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your solid progress and one nation, our God, with his love and with his wisdom. All right. This evening, we have one recognition on the agenda. John Hannan, the high school athletic director, will share the fall two thousand twenty-two student athletic recognition awards.
Good evening. Excited to be here and share the many outstanding accomplishments of our fall student athletes. Just wanted to start off before we get into those recognitions here, just share a little bit of our school spirit around CHS. Here's have a couple pictures from some of our football games here, but we don't get a great fall with homecoming and some of our other activities here, so just wanted to show these. Getting into our recognitions here, first off, we have boys cross country, and if you see here, we have honorable mention Ryan Seabird and Jack Amber, and then we have first team, Brady Lewis, and second team, Woody Burrell. And then over on the left-hand side, we celebrate around CHS here, most of you are aware of this, we have a parade around the school when you advance to state. So Brady and Woody have a parade around the school here and their approach, their way. And then we had Charlie McKenzie was first team all conference for girls cross country. And then boys volleyball has just been on an outstanding run here. They were conference champions for the fifth year in a row, so there's a picture of the squad. And then if you look on the bottom, we have three individuals who were second team all conference. So we had Grant Shipley, Zach Miller, and Jim Patrick, and then if you look up top, Brady Ball and Phil Murray, who were first team all conference, and P. Wiley was not only first team all conference, but was player of the year in the conference. So they had another tremendous season, they lost in sectionals. And then girls golf, again, just another very talented team that we've had here at CHS. We had for second team, we had Ava Johnson and Mavis Minkles. And then for first team, we had Kate Boganshutes, who was also player of the year for the second year in a row. She just did her sign, she's going to Montana. And then if you look on the next slide right here, they were also conference champs for the fifth year in a row. And then you see another celebration we had for Kate, who was dancing to state there with her teammates and her coach, Chris Goodwin. And then for girls volleyball, we had honorable mention Cassidy Gall, and then second team was JP. And then football, we had honorable mention Joe Kaminsky and Tyler White on the bottom, and then also honorable mention on the top, we have Connor Clu and Kyle Anderson. And then for second team, we had Colton Borg and Justin Kroll, and then first team was Philip Zera. And then boys soccer, we had second team was Michael Emes, and first team was Griffin French, and they were also regional champs, so that was a picture of those taken after that. And then last, we had girls tennis here, which achieved school history here. They were the first tennis team ever to advance to team state. Okay, so you see a picture of the team right there. Again, we have a lot of parades around CHS here, so you see that was one of our many parades this fall. And then you see over on the right-hand side there, we also have individual state for those of you that are familiar with tennis. We had doubles, we had Carly O'Leary and Zoe Larson, and I'll talk more about them on the next slide. And we also have for doubles Tess Kornetsky and Katina Zerashay. And then for singles, Ava Andre also advanced to state for individual state. And then Zoe Larson and Carly O'Leary were state runner-up for doubles, so they had a tremendous run at state. So that concludes our fall accolades here as we are just kicking off winter sports season, so we have our first competition Saturday for boys hockey. If you have any questions, thank you very much.
Thank you, John. Yeah. All right, moving on to the consent agenda, agenda. With regards to the consent agenda, board members, I ask that you approve the minutes from the regular board meeting on October twenty-six, two thousand twenty-two, the budget hearing minutes from October twenty-six, two thousand twenty-two, the budget and finance report, which includes the summary of account, check register, check detail, and credit card transaction reports, and the personnel report. Mr. Farner, Director of Human Resources, will provide a brief overview of the personnel report.
This will be brief, we have no contracts, retirements, or resignations to approve that.
Thank you. All right, this evening, there are four updates we will provide to the board.
Should we vote on the consent?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so you presented the consent agenda, do I have any kind of motion on that? Motion to approve the consent?
There are motion?
I have a second.
Got a motion and a second, any comments, discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? None? Motion passes? unanimous? Okay. Again, this evening, we have four updates we provide to the board. The first will be the Cedarburg Education Foundation, and this update is provided by CEF Board President Mark Martino.
Good evening, board. Yep. Good evening, board members. So I'm Mark Martino, President of the CEF. We just had our annual gala, so there's a lot of exciting news to share with you, so we'll get right into it. For some of you, you may be new to the board, may not be familiar with who we are and what we do, so just a quick overview of our mission and some of our objectives. So we essentially provide means for the schools and individuals and businesses to work together to help students achieve their potential by providing financial support through private funding. So really what that means is we're trying to stimulate academic achievement, support the students, teachers, administrative staff, provide a continuous source of funding for inspired programs, and increase local business civic and community involvement, and then also introduce innovative educational opportunities. Couple of quick stats, so we were founded in two thousand six, we've had sixty-two board members since then, we've had twelve student ambassadors, so our student ambassador program actually started about two years ago, and it's been a great success, we've had a lot of students apply, and we've actually increased the number of ambassadors that we have every year now. We've funded over six hundred thousand dollars in grants, and our endowment balance is over five hundred thousand dollars. Couple of quick fundraising milestones, so this is our first update since our gala in two thousand twenty-one. So last year at our gala, we raised over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which was a record, and then just last weekend, as I mentioned, we had our twenty-twenty-two gala, and we raised over a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, setting a new record again. In both years, the event was sold out within minutes of it being available online, so maybe we'll find a bigger place, we'll see. Grants awarded for two thousand twenty-two, so in total, we've funded over sixty-one thousand dollars in grants this year. You can see it has a nice segment across the entire district as far as hitting the schools, the elementary schools, the middle school, and high school. We did the kindness retreat, which is, I believe, still actually going to occur, it hasn't happened yet, but that'll be to all the elementary schools. We are recommitting to the Girls in Steaming Program and helping them to expand that across all of the elementary schools, and also support them in their annual event at the end of the year. We funded the dramatic play grant at Thorson Elementary, which is also something that is being pursued at other elementary schools as well. This is kind of a pilot project for the elementary schools. We're doing the story walk podiums for the outdoor space, outdoor learning space at West Lawn. We funded the Ford Farms hydroponic system so that the middle schoolers can actually grow fresh foods at the school, and there's a collaboration with the Airmark Food Program so they can actually serve those produce in the lunchroom. We also funded a new CNC router, which is consistent with the equipment that you guys have here at the high school in the Innovation Center, so now students will be getting exposure to that equipment at the middle school so they can do more advanced projects once they get to the high school, because they'll have familiarity with the equipment. And lastly, at the high school, we did the additional maxi drill systems for all the different math programs, and we actually just got a picture today from the teacher who applied for that grant, showing that they have all that equipment and they're going to start implementing that this semester. We gave out some awards last weekend, so the innovator of the year award goes to the teacher or staff that is basically driving the most grants and participation within the CEF. Katie has been a champion for West Lawn for many years, and she was a champion for the maker spaces, which are now available in all of the school district, at all of the schools. So she was our innovator of the year. Our founder's award went to Mike Farley, so he was actually one of our founders, and he was one of the gentlemen behind the actual design of our logo and a lot of the branding to help kind of get our identity out there back in two thousand six, two thousand seven. And then the business of the year award went to Beal Foundation and Beal USA, and they had an exciting announcement for us, something that we've been working with Jared and Alan and his team, and the Beal Foundation over the last couple of months, and that is that they are going to be extending a hundred and twelve thousand dollar grant to the high school to help fund the media studio project. So again, very exciting news, and that is going in towards the recording studio, which will be right over here behind the glass wall, and also the media studio. So a very exciting project, and we're excited to get that going. And then just a quick thank you and recognition of our board members and student ambassadors, couldn't do it without all of them, it's a big lift to pull up the gala and raise all these funds, so we've got a great team, and we're excited for both future holds. Any questions?
It's amazing.
Yeah, it's a great community, it says a lot about our community.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you, Mark. All right. It is my pleasure to provide a short update on the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Last Friday was Veterans Day. To honor and recognize the impact veterans have had on the community and the nation, the local American Legion Post two eighty-eight organized a veteran's vehicle parade. The vehicle parade began with the veterans driving through the Parkview, West Lawn, and Thorson Elementary Schools parking lots. At each elementary school, the students stood outside cheering and holding signs thanking and celebrating veterans. I was present at Thorson when the vehicles drove through, and it was really special to not only see the students' reactions, but also the veterans' reactions to all the student and teacher support. At the conclusion of the vehicle parade, many of the veterans proceeded to Webster Middle School for Veterans Day presentation. Again, it was memorable to watch the students participate in the flag raising ceremony and their interaction with the veterans. This is one of many events I have recently witnessed and participated in that demonstrate why Cedarburg is such a strong community. As Mark mentioned, this past Saturday evening was the two thousand twenty-two CEF full gala held at the bottom. It was an exciting evening and a joy to see and interact with a myriad of individuals who not only support CSD with their effort, but also their funds. An important milestone for the school year occurred on Thursday, November third, it was the end of the first quarter. With that, we look forward to parent teacher conferences tomorrow evening. Finally, the Wisconsin State Report Cards were released yesterday. I would like to congratulate the Cedarburg School Community, parents, students, teachers, and administrators on the strong academic achievement and growth that resulted in the report card rankings. In a bit, Kirsten Collins will share some of those results. Board members, next you will see in your board packets the district school safety drill reports for Webster Middle School, Thorson Elementary School, and West Lawn Elementary School. As a requirement of Act one forty-three, we are asking that the board, we are asking the board to review the reports. No action is necessary. For the last update this evening, Kirsten Collins will provide a brief overview of the Wisconsin State District and School Report Cards, which were released yesterday.
Good evening. I am pleased to be here tonight to share with you our annual school and district report cards. Earlier this fall, we did a little report sharing the state assessment update. These report cards are based on that state assessment data, but also the report cards measure our school effectiveness with a variety of other data pieces, so it's more than just the state assessment data. So as far as our assessment reporting, I'm just reminding you, student performance presentations usually happen in September, state report cards in November, and then you'll hear more about our school goals based on our assessment results and what their school SOLO ability focuses for the year, and you'll hear that in the coming months from each school. So tonight, I'll just do a quick walkthrough of our report cards, and you have copies in front of you, and the first piece that you'll have is that anatomy of the report card, and that gives you a little overview of what the report card is made up of, and then I'll go through each report card. So just an overview of the accountability process of the report cards. The purpose is to evaluate the effectiveness of schools and holding district accountable for preparing all students. It satisfies this requirements for state and federal reporting, and then for us personally in the district, we really value this marker of identifying our needs and areas to strengthen, and really what we're doing well. Our district has had varied results historically because the report cards have been a bit changing and a little volatile in how they're made up. I'm happy to report, and I think we've settled in an area that the report card did not change from last year to this year, so that's no longer a moving target as far as we're concerned, and it seems that these guys seem to settle in on what makes sense, and it's reduced the volatility of those scores, and you'll see a little bit of that and probably remember some of that from years prior. So we still use caution when comparing from year to year because some of those reporting and measurements changed, but not since last year. So the two report cards, we can very easily compare. So, little bit about the report cards, and you have that overview sheet there for you. At the top of each report card, including the district, you will see we have demographic details, and there's also a little blurb at the top, a little something we wrote about each school or the district that is really informational piece for people who are looking at a report card and wondering who is Cedarburg, what do they value, just a quick little statement. I think we're, let me speak to about four hundred and fifty words, but that's ours. But you'll see that, and then you'll see our score summary. The score summary is made up of four priority areas, one being achievement, one being overall growth, and then another one called target group outcomes, and those target group outcomes are all reported on the lowest twenty-five percent of the students in a school or district. And so that is a piece that really helps to kind of level the playing field, we used to work with subgroups, and that can be a whole mess of subgroups that we have and some do not, and things like that, so moving to that target group outcome of the lowest twenty-five percent of learners in your building or district has really been very helpful. So, and then the last piece is on track to graduation or progress there. Each area then has a priority area score detail, and then later on in, especially the high school report, you will see course and program data reporting. These things are not measured in the overall score, but they are reported as an informational piece to our constituents, to our stakeholders in the district. So as Dr. Kunkit mentioned, we are very proud to say all five of our schools for the second year in a row, in a row, have significantly exceeded expectations, and that's the highest rating in the district. Here's a little bit of our historical data, and you can see the blank here in two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, there were no report cards because the only state assessment that we were able to administer was the high school ACT, so the rest of our schools did not participate in a state assessment because we weren't physically in school. But the two years that you can see on the left in the chart are the two years of the report cards that are very comparable, so when you look there, you are seeing increases in the overall score, the summary score for most of our buildings, but all of them seem that trajectory of upward continuous improvement. So in the actual PowerPoint, there is a detailed history that we'll go into, if you click on that link, it will go into some more specifics, and if you have questions on any of that that I'm not presenting tonight, feel free to reach out. The other thing that I want to point out on this slide is we have a couple abstracts here, and you can see CHS had a year where it was kind of the yellow, only meeting expectations, and that was a data irregularity that we contested, and then also West Lawn had a deduction for, which we complained highly, and it went away, but a deduction for test participation. That was, we thought, a very unfair deduction, giving options to pop down in the test. So, so getting into the report cards. So our overall score, ninety point three, that's our highest score so far to date, so broke the ninety barrier, very excited about that. When you look at the priority area weights, each school and the district has a little different weighting in achievement and growth in those two of the four areas, and that is based on the number of students that we have, the percent of students in free and reduced lunch category, understanding that we really value growth in schools that have that under or disadvantaged status versus achievement, and so that's a formula that comes through in terms of that percentage. So you'll see that weighting change from district to each school. Otherwise, that target group is twenty-five percent of the score, and then the on track to graduations are twenty-five percent of the overall score.
Chris, I got a question on the target group, you said it was the twenty-five percent lowest, what do you mean by lowest, you mean like scores?
Score in the state assessment from the prior year.
Okay, and so you mentioned something about economically, does it, like, that fits into this too somehow, I'd say?
Yes, so it actually fits in in the priority area weighting, how much is achievement weighted versus how much growth is weighted in, as a, I don't want to say as a rule, but in general, our school districts and schools that have a greater percent of their students coming from in a disadvantaged state, generally, you won't see achievements as high, so weighting that is an unfair weighting to say we're going to weight twenty-five percent of achievement in this school and twenty-five percent growth. That would be an unfair weighting in our situation where we're super high achieving, have very low socioeconomic, lower socioeconomic issues than others, where if you look at a different school that has a tremendous amount of free and reduced lunch students, it's really focusing on that growth because generally that achievement is lower. So there is a formula, and I can start that with you, I'll link to it, that actually, you put, it's a formula that you put in your amount free reduce, and it adjusts and shows you what that weighting is. It's a scale that they use.
Sure, that's a way to focus, like, give the growth component higher weighting for lower income schools.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
That's a very good way to summarize that for me, thank you. So getting into those priority areas scores, you can see each of the darker bars is our score, and the lighter gray bars are the, is the state's score. And as you can see, and what you would expect, is that we consistently score higher than the state. So of note for our district report card, that is, of course, all of our schools are exceeding expectations for the second year in a row. When the report cards were released yesterday, we also get a data file every school and district in the state, and when we do that, we can see how we compare to other schools. So very excited to tell you that we are the third highest district in the state for our overall score, so very amazing work by all of our teachers, students, families, community, just very proud of that. It is our highest district score over time. And then one thing that we're really seeing and proud of is our increased percent of students proficient and advanced in both ELA and math. So we've seen continuous improvement there over the years, and it's continued.
That really jumped up to me, Kristen, I think when most members of the public or people in the community look at these DCA report cards, they look at the district report card, not necessarily digging into the school ones, but I mean, it just shows right on there the growth that our district had for math proficiency, and then really a huge, in my opinion, a huge jump in the number of students that were proficient or higher in English like a chance, and I know that so many people in the district, and Alan, have been spending a lot of time working on that and improving that, and it was so wonderful to see the numbers reflect all the work that's been done.
Yes. We have a lot of districts seeing improvements because of the learning loss that we've had over a couple of years. In our district, we did not see that learning loss, so again, to see that improvement a second year in a row is really remarkable. So we're going to move into the elementary schools, and I actually checked to see if Mrs. Hope was going to be here, because this is a point of pride, and this is Jane's goal, breaking that ninety barrier, and congratulations, Jane, this is an amazing report card. All of our schools are, but this was a huge goal, tremendous work done at Parkview, and exceeding, significantly exceeding expectations, which we expected, but when you dig into the actual report card, look at that achievement, which is really incredible, a ninety-seven point seven, and when you look at the mathematics achievement, we scored a hundred out of a hundred points, now that's not a percentage, it's just four out of a hundred, but, and Parkview had themes in every priority area, and increasing that student achievement, increased student achievement, and their student achievement was higher or the same as ninety-nine point six percent of schools in the state. That's amazing. Truly amazing, it has to be like one school, right? So, and that said, we have done that, we have gone out and found the schools that are doing well, that were the institutions that we're at five years ago, we were visiting those schools and saying, what are you doing? Our schools are those schools. People ask, Jane, what did you do? She's actually doing that work now around the state as a consultant, and they're saying, what did you do? So our ELA increased there three points, and that math to one hundred is amazing. Our ELA growth score, almost eleven points, and our significant increase in the percent proficient advanced. So when I spoke with Brittany and figuring out what their priorities are, it's really tapping into that target group. So when you look at that target group, their achievement is there and their growth is there. We want that growth and achievement to be the same as all students, if not more. We need to do some gap closing growth there, so the focus there on that target group is huge. We have an advantage or a privilege that So when I spoke with Brittany and figuring out what their priorities are, is really tapping into that target group. So when you look at that target group, their achievement is there and their growth is there. We want that growth and achievement to be the same as all students, if not more. We need to do some gap closing growth there. So the focus there on that target group is huge. We have an advantage or a privilege that in our lowest twenty-five percent, we have a lot of students who are proficient in that group. That's our makeup of our students. So there are some students that need a lot of gap closing growth, but also we do have some proficient students there, but we want to grow all learners. Congratulations, Mrs. Hope. So at Thorson, our overall score significantly exceeds expectations. You can see the difference here in Thorson, that weighting, priority weighting is different. So weighting more achievement than our other schools so far. At Thorson, we saw an increase in student achievement in three points from last year, so that's a great growth for them. They have had a continued increase of proficient and advanced. And the student growth area has increased over thirty points in the last five years. That's huge. So when speaking with Angela, looking at their areas of focus, they're really focusing on the writing skills of their students, and again, that growth of each learner. Westlon had the highest score in our district of ninety-two point two, and that's a record for our schools. And they significantly exceed. Notice that priority weight, the difference there. So gains in every priority area. Their increased student achievement, both ELA and math. And then if you look at that target group growth, from eighty-four to ninety-three, that's amazing. They are the fifth ranked elementary school in the state of Wisconsin, in K five elementary schools. Been talking with Katie, she said, can I say that?
What?
Of course you can. It's a great point of pride. So area of focus, they are, and same as last year, growing each learner. Webster, I'm going to say, Webster has a tenth of a point higher. Webster's score is a ninety-two point three. They have the highest score. You see the difference in the priority weighting there. And Webster also saw gains in every priority area, increased student achievement and growth. Many times, you might see schools increase their achievement, but their growth might not be as high. We're doing really well in both areas. Their target group growth went from eighty-three point one last year to ninety-two point six. They are the fourth ranked middle school in Wisconsin. When we compare our schools and rank them, we compare less schools, so grades to grades. There might be a middle school that might be four through eight. We don't compare that. We compare six through eight middle schools. Same thing with the elementaries, four K to grade five. Area of focus, growth of all students or identification of their need. This is probably the pretty report card. Cedarburg High School, first of all, score of eighty-seven point zero. This is the number four high school in the state with more than two hundred and fifty students. I could name those other schools for you if you want. There are always returns. We jockey for position with these schools every year.
Maybe each is a top student.
Yep. Number one is Whitefish Bay. Number two and three are Brookfield Central and then Brookfield East. We have high achievement and growth, so like I said before, that is something that is not easy to do. We have an increase in our students that are proficient and advanced in ELA and math. That has been a consistent improvement over time. And their area of focus is those target group outcomes. And in speaking with Casey, they're really working on the writing component and really seeing that as a rigorous goal in getting students to increase their writing abilities, and that being a very much an indicator of college and career readiness. So very focused there, whole school. Is the writing evaluated in any case? It is. So in the board exam, there is text dependent analysis that we write. And then in our ACT Aspire, which now will be the pre-ACT at high school level, and on the ACT, there is a writing test.
It also helps a lot in reading.
Absolutely.
It should touch on a lot of things.
So our next steps and work, continue the focus on our PLC, professional learning community, and work in the school teams. We've seen a great focus there in our teachers talking always about student needs and the data, and what are the action steps to help our students grow and learn. Our work around goal setting. Our buildings will be presenting their goals. Our grade level teams have goals of their own down to the classroom, and then also we work with our students setting goals, having data chats around what are your goals? What are your areas of strength, and where can we have opportunities to grow? Identifying those target group needs is huge. And then providing intervention and remediation for any of those gaps or areas of need for students. Our schools will work through their goal and SLO presentation for the board. A lot of focus on literacy right now, and then writing also. We're working through more PD around those items too, and so that's also a focus. So with that, that's our school report cards. Very happy and fun thing to present on, and we look forward to continued high performance and recording to the board.
Thanks. And again, this is the VPRO report card. We don't land it exclusively. Of course, you got a lot of measures, and this is just one piece of the puzzle, and it looks like a good piece.
Yep, absolutely. Thanks.
Thank you, Kristen.
All right, public comment. I have one person signed up. So I will read our required statement. Make sure that you're right to hear the required statement. Any district staff member, district president, parent of this district student who or student enrolled in the district may comment during public comment, in the public comment portion of the meeting per Board Policy 0167.3. For this meeting, the committee may address the board during the public comment section of the meeting regarding topics within the legitimate jurisdiction of the board. Individuals making public comments are not immune from liability during public comment and can be liable for defamation of false claims. In the past, the State Attorney General issued guidance on how government bodies such as school boards should conduct a public comment portions of their meetings. This guidance was given to assist the governmental bodies in avoiding violations of the state's open meetings laws. The essence of the open meetings law guidance is that unless the topic brought forward to the board is publicly noticed, no significant discussion can be held on that item. Instead, the topic may be listed as an item on a future meeting agenda whereby discussion could then be held. The reason for this Attorney General guidance is to ensure that all interested parties have equal opportunity and advance notice to participate in the discussions with the full school board. Per Board Policy 0167.3, the board has the authority to determine if public comment may be taken and if allowed, on what portions of the agenda comment will be received. Per School Board Policy 0144.2, the board will respect the confidentiality of information that is privileged under applicable laws. This includes, but is not limited to, information under current or imminent litigation and/or student-specific information per Board Policy 8330. If your item is not listed on tonight's agenda and you want to have a discussion regarding the topic, you are encouraged to contact the district superintendent or request that your item be listed on a future meeting agenda for public comment. As always, you are encouraged to contact board members outside of the meeting setting with your comments and concerns. Please note that board members are limited to public engagement via email as noted in Board Policy 0167.5. Please make your comments to the board and not to any individuals in the audience. As per School Board Policy 0167.3, each statement made by a participant shall not exceed three minutes' duration. Please note that this is a public meeting, and we ask everyone to address one another with the courtesy and respect you would like to receive in return. When you approach the microphone, please state your name and address for the record. Please state what topic you are commenting on. If you are under age eighteen or are a student in Cedarburg schools, please always state your birth date. As a reminder, this meeting is being reported and will be posted on the district's website. With that, we have an individual, Scott Sidney, who's signed up to make a public comment.
Scott Sidney, North Guardy West 6522 Jackson Street, talk on SEL and Second Step. So do you remember the self-esteem movement sold promote student success? Well, it didn't. Psychology professor Dr. Jean Twenge noted, "Self-esteem isn't linked to academic achievement, good behavior, or success." How about the new math? One author wrote, "Dismal report after dismal report," pointed to the fact that the new math was not working. In fact, an entire book was written, "Why Johnny Can't Add: The Failure of New Math." Then there is the whole language approach to reading. One researcher observed, "The whole language people share a system of beliefs and claim they have evidence to support their beliefs. But when you look up what they cite as evidence, it is often just someone else's published beliefs." Now we have SEL and Second Step, each height as solutions to exactly what? One parent said Second Step helped their child. Do we then mandate it for every child? Second Step research itself says, "Public resources for school readiness should be devoted primarily to enhancing young children's thinking, reasoning, and number skills." Another finds, "The program had no positive impact on academic outcomes." At a meeting, Elizabeth Sharlin noted, "An emphasis on empathy in Second Step." A staff member explained, "It trains children to understand how others feel." But a National Library of Medicine review states, "The act of empathizing cannot be taught." Educational psychologist Dr. Carrie Empinstall writes, "The weakness of educational decision-making is its vulnerable ability to fadish swings." When do we stop experimenting with kids? The greatest literature ever written, the most advanced mathematics, the best leaders, didn't come from whole language, new math, self-esteem, or social emotional learning. Dr. Twenge says perseverance, hard working, hard work, having realistic view of your own ability leads to success. It's not sexy, it's not fun, it just works." Thank you.
Thank you. No one else has signed up, but is there anyone else here who wishes to make their comment?
Connehan Cade and Southern 507255, Living Street, Cedarburg, Wisconsin. Mr. Creer, you mentioned that parents are encouraged to contact board members outside of meetings. Parents contact board members in all kinds of ways. Some choose to email, some choose to attend meetings like this, some choose to attend meetings like this as well as committee meetings. Some would like to speak with board members in person, face to face. Unfortunately, we have board members who actively walk away from constituents, who have valuable insight into what goes on in our schools. As we were all listening to the incredible presentation about our academics, I am sitting there as a parent who has listened to Mrs. Hope describe the ins and outs of those reports for the past several years. So I am the parent that dates into all of those numbers. My son is in the ninety-ninth percentile for math, and ninety, no, I'm sorry, ninety-ninth percentile for reading, ninety-seventh percentile for math. So believe me, I value academic success. I understand its merit. That being said, we also have reports, quarterly reports that go out for all of our students. And in each quarter, there is an area that notates their, excuse me, I didn't prepare this evening as often as I do usually, but ultimately, the portion there comes down to life learning, lifelong learning skills. It is in our quarterly reports for each and every student. Lifelong learning skills, not math, not science, not social studies. It is, if it's important enough to be in our quarterly reports for each of our students, where we mark if they're developing skills, if they are, you know, meeting those or exceptional, then guess what? We need to have things in our curriculum that help measure that. I know my son, I know that he is at that D V mark every single first quarter, and then he goes to the secure and the exceeding because he has those day-to-day instructions with other students. He's not pulled out for lessons just on his own with the few students who also struggle in this area. I am angry, and I have the right to be angry at this point because my son is part of the demographic that you are so proud to talk about. Ninety-ninth percentile, ninety-seventh percentile. SEL is helpful for our feeling. We use curriculum that is not from 2020. I do not appreciate board members walking away from me at committee meetings or after board meetings when I ask for a clarification to a statement that is made. Please pay attention to what you say, Mr. Creer, that people are encouraged to contact you outside of board meetings. That means talking in person. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are we allowed to respond on that or about this on a day in general?
If I say something to any of you.
Okay. I would just say in general, I appreciate an email. I mean, I have a mom with three kids, and often these meetings, especially that committee meeting goes very late, I often have to hire a sitter. So for somebody to approach me in a parking lot wanting me to stop going home to relieve my sitter, it's not really a good time for me usually. So I would always encourage an email should we be going in.
Yeah, or civil discussion.
Excuse me, for clarification's sake, no one was approached in the parking lot, and in fact, a board member who is not present here was gracious enough to take twenty-some minutes of their time to talk to me in a very cold parking lot. That's not my expectation of board members. I asked a question while individuals were in school, and I was walked away from. That's not, that's not okay.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
What's next?
Recommendations. We have three recommendations this evening. The first recommendation will be presented by Conrad Parner, Director of Human Resources, regarding the 2023-2024 school year calendar.
Thank you. This evening, we have a very similar calendar where we've had the last few years, virtually identical to this year's in terms of the number of days for students, the numbers of days for staff. You'll see a little bit of a movement around some of the PD days. We front-loaded a little bit at the beginning of the year, so there's an extra day in the beginning of the year instead of during the year. But other than that, it's largely similar to what we've been doing. Having answered any questions that you may have.
I do have a question. Is there any wiggle room on that first day of school week Friday?
We can start anytime, as long as it's September first or later. So that's how the law works. We looked at doing it later. It messes things up at the back end. We can't get the week off before summer academy starts is one of the issues. And it also doesn't allow for good, or equipment breaks for the quarters for the grade marking periods. And so this is the one that we ended up recommending because it just turned out to be the best calendar. The Friday as the first day of school, there's pros and cons to that. A lot of people like the idea that you get everybody into one day, and then they start a full week after that. It's. It's some of that just first day of school kind of stuff taken care of. Other people say we'd rather have a full week and start on Monday or Tuesday. Starting after Labor Day is awfully late. That really pushes the year too far back. And so ultimately, we had to go with that Friday, the first, which is the first day we're allowed to start. Ideally, we can start before that, but state law doesn't allow.
When I was a kid.
Me too.
Always have Tuesday after.
Oh, really? Oh, yeah. When I was a kid, we always started in the last week of August.
Is it ever possible to go to one at a date?
You have to go through some pretty elaborate processes, my understanding. Unless, if you have construction going on in your district, then you can submit to do a waiver. Other than that, I'm not sure if you can without the construction. If you do, you have to literally go through like a referendum, like you have to get a forward on it. Very, very, I don't know of any district that's not any deviation unless they had a referendum passed it and they were able to move because of construction purposes. That's the one thing the state will let you do. I know that for sure. I haven't heard anybody doing it, not construction related. So I'm thinking it might not be able to.
We need to start some construction.
Well, so like, how much, how much of a problem would it cause? Like, to do a, you know, started on that Tuesday, said it messed up the quarters and like, can you maybe be a little more specific, just so that people understand? Because I can see some issues for some families here. I don't know if you'll get some absences on that Friday, and then I don't know if it's going to be, how effective that day would be. But we've got to kind of balance the pros and cons. I think you already have, but help us understand a little bit, yeah?
Yeah, it's really, we can do almost anything if we're willing to adjust other days. So if we went to one less student day by not having school on that Friday, you know, that would probably be a recommendation that we would come back with as administrators because we still have a good cushion for canceled days. We lose one cushion day, so of course that'll be the year that we'll have that many canceled days and all be going, ah, now we gotta make it up. But that would be a potential solution. Anything, if you do don't, if you don't have that as a school day, it just messes up and then the marking period and pushes the year back. You don't want to push the year back one day and have kids come back on a Monday and have that be the last day of school in June. So that doesn't make any sense. You could shorten a break somewhere, but these breaks are already pretty short. We don't have a lot of room there to make any changes. It's probably the shortest winter break in the 10 years I've been here. You could take a PD day, record day, not a record day, probably a PD day during the year. We could do one less of those somewhere, but then that impacts important work that staff is doing around the PLC work and around all the other academic supports that we're near mentions that we're trying to do. So we spent a lot of time on this. We always bring it to you after many, many hours of haggling over what does make the most sense, but we certainly can take it back if the board isn't comfortable with it.
So we've got two of these PD dates, April.
Yeah, one of them's actually a record day, so that's a quarter marking period.
And the April 1st one is the one day after Easter.
Right.
We thought that would be a good place to put that.
Could you do a PD day on the first? On September 1st instead of October 20? That's seven days.
We could do another, yeah, you could switch a PD, it's just that's going to put more days than we've ever had at the start of the year, and it's, anything's doable.
In terms of like not, not any break?
It just messes up the work that we try to do during the year with those PD days. They're very strategically built into here to help us do things like common formative assessment work, evaluating the common formative assessments, because those are big drivers for student achievement and helping us make sure that we're providing the interventions that we do when students aren't showing that they're mastering stuff. So as soon as we start tinkering with those during the year, it can be done, it's just we lose valuable time that we're hoping to get that.
Part of that, part of that October Professional Development Day is meant to help our teachers as they get the fall assessment. That first one that's done in September, be able to react to that and adjust some of their instruction.
I imagine this cycles every six, seven years? It's like this is hard to follow.
Yep, if you look back, you'll see very similar trends over the years. And EPR always has an interesting impact on those calendars. It's an interesting business.
Yeah, just so the, our constituents and our families understand that it's not just arbitrary calendar that we slap together. It's an awful lot of work that goes into it, and it's not, I mean, I don't think it's ideal for many families to have school start on the first of September, but you're explaining that they have to.
Totally understand. Well, no, we don't have to, it just has the other impact. So we always bring you, as an administrative team, there's consensus. We always bring you a calendar that we've come to an agreement that this is what we feel is the best, but obviously, the board has the final say, so.
Do you have any stance that say the last time you did this, I'll hide it up?
I don't think I'd be able to pull that off. I'm sorry. You could look, if you try, it's gonna be a while. Yeah. Certainly look into it, see what we can find.
This is also the time when I would encourage people to talk to the legislature and see if we can't get that September 1st. I know many of our local legislature legislators have proposed that, and it hasn't gone anywhere, but it's another opportunity to try.
Yeah, every few years, we seem to get the whispers and hear that there's talk in Madison that there's some movement in willing us to change it, and then it seems to always get shot down by the Wisconsin Bills and Door County tourist industry is the primary reason why they don't let us start school until September. And they like to keep those standards working.
All right, so I guess you're looking, we're looking for a motion to approve the calendar or if anyone, if anyone wishes to do so?
I just make a motion to approve the calendar and is that it? One second, Matt.
A motion and a second, is there any further discussion on the matter? All right, so we'll take the vote. A motion and a second, call in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
All right, now Brian Rexwell, well, Director of Buildings and Rounds, will recommend
and take questions on the Cedarburg School District Emergency and Crisis Response Plan.
Per Act 143, we need to have the board review and approve our district safety plan. We did make a few changes this year, mostly due to, if we don't have to change year after year, what we can do is, we don't have to present it to the board every year, so we've kind of trimmed out some of the fat, gotten rid of names, and instead replaced it with titles, phone numbers, added a section in there, but we're already swatting. Pretty confident with what's presented, so yeah, I guess we're looking for his approval.
Just a general question, were some updates made prior to the last statewide swatting event in the schools in place?
Yes, yep, specifically, yes. We added verbiage in there for swatting and what the district would do in response to this one.
Okay, so how that day went?
Yes.
Thank you.
So if anybody has any questions then? Any answer?
I have one question.
Tell me.
I reviewed these earlier this week. I thought I saw that at one elementary school, they were going to start doing Alice training for the students, is that correct?
Yep.
Okay, is that just, why, why just one?
It's, it's every elementary school, and that's, that's continued, that's continued for, we've been doing that for a few years. And yeah, each elementary school, actually each school runs through, they do a drill, an Alice drill, yeah.
Okay, so we, we're looking for a motion then to approve the district's school safety plan. Is that right?
I'll move to approve the district's school safety plan. I don't think that matters.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion, any more questions, everybody? All right, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes again this way.
All right. Thank you, Brian. All right, then to end this evening, we have three donations to the district this month. First, we have a donation of $3,454.87 from the Parkview PTO. The donation will be used to support the Parkview school environment with items such as recess carts, PE cardio drumming stickers, et cetera.
Do we do each one?
Do them all together. Okay. The second, we have a donation of $1,152 from the Westlon PTO. The donation will be used to purchase nine RAS Kids classroom one-year licenses for Westlon School. Finally, we have a donation of $755.87 from the Westlon PTO. The donation will be used to purchase 135 individual student Storyworks licenses to support third through fifth grade Westlon students. Both the RAS Kids and the Storyworks licenses have been used by other schools, elementary schools, and are used by other elementary schools in the district. Each family is notified via a letter that is sent home when their students have an account created.
And the materials of these RAS Kids and Storyworks will be aligned with the curriculum?
Correct, I'm sorry.
And if parents can access them?
Correct, yep.
Do you know if either one of these Storyworks or the RAS Kids is a kind of like a dynamically updated set of content, or even new content is added, you know, saying, oh, you know, we reviewed it at the beginning of the year and, you know, these books are in alignment with our district or?
I think with all of these, they do add more throughout the, throughout the year, so I, you know, they take in and move, kind of like a regular library, add, and then weed out as time goes on, yeah.
Okay, but as you and Laura said, that parents do have access to apologies for them to be reviewing the stories and the RAS Kids and the storybooks, correct?
Correct.
All right, so we're looking for a motion to accept the donations as stated.
How would the commission to accept the donations as stated?
A second. Motion and a second, any discussion? All who's in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Just for those of you keeping track, that's a total donation for the month of November of $5,362.74, and a total donation to date for the 2022-23 school year is $229,048.2.
Fantastic. All right, so next on the agenda is the committee reports, and we have none of those. So I will take a motion to adjourn.
One second.
Got a motion to adjourn, and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Are you done? All who's in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everybody.
You did it. I gave Jimmy your estimates of the purpose, she wasn't even using she's.
Good.
Did we take any?
I called it, I said an hour.
Is that just a quick clock?
Yeah. Google timer and it comes up. Yeah, it's pretty cool.
Because Kristin, Kristin, she is.
Yeah, Rick told me to start going this way, so I didn't have to bring his iPad.
Is that what it was?
Yeah, it was all him. You too. All right, have fun playing golf, dude.
I'm not going, it's 2:20, I'm going to be getting started at 7:30.
Oh, I'm sorry. Told you, I estimated an hour.
And like his kids are ready this year. Okay, that helps with the exiled.
Perfect, yes.
He has classmates already to mention what he wants to do.
Oh, I see.
So I see that you don't have after the high stage.
Okay.
So they've already.
Oh, sort of like.
For these kids this year.
It's like a precedent.
Okay, I was just curious, like how.